I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask for an motion for the adoption of the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda as permitted.
Second. All those in favor? Six zero. Okay, we have been presented with the 2021-22 budget, so I will open that hearing. Are there any public comments? Okay, if not, the hearing is closed. Our next item is the Revenue Neutral Rate Resolution Hearing. I will open that hearing for a public comment. There are none, the hearing is closed. Our next item is public comment.
Yes.
And this is all? Okay, Anne Nicholson? You can go ahead and come up to the podium. And you will have three minutes to speak. The board will not engage in conversation. We can ask clarifying questions, but otherwise we will not engage in that conversation. And Mr. Decker will have a timer set. And he will notify you when that...
I guess, I thought this was going to be at the end. And I wondered, how many people here are going to be talking about wearing masks or not wearing masks? Okay, my first question is, if you're far from wearing a mask, do you feel safe? Is that a white word? Yes? You don't wear a mask if you don't... You don't wear... Is anybody for masks here? No? Okay. Then I don't think I have anything to say. I was for free choice. And the fact that if people were wearing a mask, that they were protected. And so, we want the right to choose to wear, not, and have their parents being able to choose for their children to wear or not wear a mask. If something comes along and they need to wear it, then that's fine. If they don't, that's fine too. So, that's it.
Okay, we have three minutes. Stephanie Kurtz?
And I would have the impression that the woke culture would not be brought into the new schools. And I have had, heard some conversations with a couple of students, one from Chisholm and a couple from the high school, where they were asked what pronoun they wanted to be addressed by. So, that's a little concerning to me. So, my question for you is, where is that going? Where, what's the school district going to do that? Is that a policy that you guys have put out there? And what's going to be done with that? And then I will reiterate what Ms. Nicholson said about the mask. I think that it should be choice. My doctor from day one has always said they don't do any good on this breakdown of your immune system for other stuff that you have going on. And he has always encouraged us not to wear masks. So, I would encourage you to leave that open to the parents, let that out of their discretion, and be able to gauge your own students.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent and School Board of District 373, thank you for serving us and showing at the last meeting you still have common sense regarding mask-wearing and giving choice to parents. I believe in wearing a mask and have many times, working with a patient in isolation or assisting a doctor with a procedure. Most unfortunately for my profession, masks now convey another message. In the dumbing down of our exceptional country called America, this plandemic is no accident as the noose tightens around our necks by the radical ideation workings of Marxism, fascism, socialism, communism, and our own federal government for the demonic goal of a one-world order. Our immune systems are trying to survive in a frenzied psychosis of fear and anxiety. We cannot mask this any longer. Being deceived by the programming and manipulation of certain power players in academia and medicine, they sound convincingly credible. We become intimidated to conform so we don't lose status with friends or give the China flu to our dog. All for the greater good, you know? At another time, it was an armband or yellow star, but today it's a fashionable muzzle for identification. The Bible says we are fearfully and wonderfully made. We are designed to breathe fresh air, oxygen, in through our nose and mouth. It immediately goes into our lungs, is picked up by our blood, and transported through every living cell in our body for energy. Before the next breath, waste material from this process is removed through exhaling carbon dioxide. When a person can't get fresh air, and worse yet, keeps re-breathing these toxins, it sends bad bacteria back into his lungs and body. I feel this is an affront to our Creator. We are making and keeping ourselves sick. Take off that disgusting diseased diaper and walk into Dylan's with a smile to greet anyone smiling back. We will not sit down or walk away from our jobs by graceful resignation. The time has come to fight back. Be the best indispensable employee you can be. And if you get fired by noncompliance of these unconstitutional mandates, enjoy your unemployment checks while filing en masse lawsuits and retain your dignity for the strength that follows when you live and speak your truth. And Madam President, I yield my remaining time to the next speaker. Thank you.
Jenny Bliesnetz?
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak again. As you mentioned, our bodies are designed to heal themselves. If you don't believe that's true, ask yourself why you don't still have the cold that you had last winter? Or why you don't still have an owie from when you were a kid? Because your body healed itself. If our bodies did not heal themselves, I would be a walking mess. You wouldn't want to see me. I'm so thankful I don't still have every sickness and wound that I have acquired in my lifetime. What is this wonderful thing that makes our body heal themselves? Our immune system. Sadly, the American diet and lifestyle, I included, do not promote a very strong immune system. And that's why there are so many people suffering and dying from COVID, cancer, heart disease, flu, pneumonia, and so on. I keep hearing from many sources that the only way to stop the virus is hand washing, social distancing, wearing masks, and now the vaccine. Don't even get started on that one. While some of that may be true, the reality is that we are never going to be able to stop this threat of COVID or any other sickness out there, common cold, flu, et cetera. I don't wear a mask, and I got COVID. Other people wear masks and have got the vaccine and still got COVID. We probably all will get it, so the question is, how will your body deal with it? So, rather than forcing masks on everyone, what we should be doing is educating people on how to boost and support their immune systems so their bodies can fight off the viruses that will come their way and not have to be afraid of them. It is potentially possible that masks would work if they were worn 100% correctly and in a perfectly sterile environment where they were changed for a new one on a frequent basis, like in a surgical room. But you cannot convince me that masks being worn by children are being worn correctly and that where they're at in school is a perfectly sterile environment. I used to work in a lager. And it has been proven that masks worn incorrectly are much more harmful than helpful. If masks do really work and do their job, then they are actually suppressing the immune system. And when people who have been wearing them consistently take them off, their body is going to be in big trouble when it's bombarded with all the germs still floating around out there. Parents need to take the responsibility of promoting a healthy immune system in their children. Proper nutrition, limiting sugar amounts, supplementing with vitamins if needed, exercise, drinking enough water, getting adequate sunshine and fresh air, getting enough sleep, and not encouraging stress and fear in their lives. And if their child is sick, keep them home. And if they feel the place they are sending them is not safe, keep them home. Parents have a responsibility for the safety of their children. But every parent deserves the freedom to choose for their children. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of care. Take care of yourself. So, once again, I thank you last week, or two weeks ago, for standing up and not requiring masks and asking you to continue not requiring them for everybody. People can still choose to wear them if they desire, but let the rest of the population breathe freely and start encouraging healthy immune systems. Thank you.
Timothy Connor?
Good evening, thanks for serving. I know that you probably not use all this attention when people show up regularly. It's just because we love you that much. I know you guys are all doing your own research. And you're digging in and finding out that there's a whole group of people say this? A whole group of people say that? And there's a bunch of experts that say this? A bunch of experts say that? We're doing a lot of research too. And that's why we're here. A lot of us have been digging, and we've been listening to the experts as well. And we understand the risks of driving to school, we understand the risks of swimming in the swimming pool. We understand those risks. None of us intend on bubble wrapping our kids, although that's probably the safest thing to do, I suppose. But I'm the guy who says eat in there. Eat in there. I ate it. It's good for you. So, let us, let us live our lives, please. I understand enrollment's down 6%. I know the ring is full. I know Larry is full. You ought to pay attention. Nobody here is wearing masks. People don't want their masks. We do want to make our own decisions. And there's a lot of good science to support that. There's more science to support that. We should not be forced to do those things. We do want to be healthy. We don't want our kids sick, and we don't want our kids getting other people sick and that kind of stuff. All that is just a big charade. And if we look at it, peel off the layers, we know it's a big charade. So many times in 31 years of pastoring, I've sat down with couples, he said, she said. I know what that's like. And you just have to keep asking questions and ask questions. At the end of the day, if those two groups can get together, that's a beautiful thing, but it doesn't always happen. And I know you're facing these situations where so much of he said, she said, not going to make everybody happy. And I'm just here to say, there's a whole lot of us who are watching and who really care. And we are doing our research. And they're just the buffoons from the sticks. And we even know you are too, so let's do this together. And let's continue making this school district great. And move forward together as a team, so there's not all this division. There's a huge group that isn't here. And that's why I said not to speak. I don't have a big act of pride, I don't have a big speech to say, except that a lot of people say, would you stand in front of us if we can't do that? Thank you.
Joe Owen?
Good evening, Board. And thanks for allowing us to do your new speech. And I know somebody kind of addressed it, but if you are here specifically for the treating of choice, whether a mask or vaccine or what, you want the choice, would you raise your hand? That's, I mean, that's a pretty good reason. It's bigger than the last time I was here, right? So, I don't think I need to say anymore on that specific topic, other than every state employee, myself included, who takes office to complete any task on behalf of the citizens of the state of Kansas who require to take an oath. I know I had to, and I'm pretty sure that each of you did, and if you didn't, you should have. And that oath is to swear and to uphold and defend the Constitution, for you to uphold the Constitution, for me to defend it, of the state of Kansas and the United States, right? And so, based on my training, if you want any background on that, on my, you know, I guess, authority to speak on this subject, you could ask Mr. Ortiz later. Mr. Ortiz, you have my permission to let him know what background I have, okay? When I take, when I go out and take my, perform my duty on the side of the road, anytime I take action, I can take away somebody's rights. Or I can, you know, send them on their way and give them their rights back. But every time I take action, I temporarily, at the very least, take somebody's rights from them, right? And so, if the school board, if the school mandates masks or mandates vaccines, they are forcing individuals to do what it is they don't want to do necessarily. And so, you are taking away somebody's constitutional rights, both by the Kansas State Constitution and the United States Constitution. And it is your duty to uphold those rights. So, I just wanted to remind you of that. There are so many different aspects that mask mandates and vaccine mandates are wrong. But when it all comes down to your oath of office and the reason you're sitting in those seats, your duty, your job is to uphold the Constitution. And your job is also to ensure that our children are being educated properly. So, I thank you for doing that today, making sure you're educated properly and so far, upholding our constitutional rights as parents, our students' constitutional rights on whether or not they want to wear a mask. And I would just ask you to continue to do that. And I know that Mr. Van Rankin and some of the others have a duty to say, hey, these are federal regulations that are set in place, and if I don't read this paper, then we could face some consequences. I get that. But let's ask our teachers and our administrators to leave personal politics out of it. I went through Chisholm Middle Schools Meet the Teacher Night and personally observed personal politics being spread on display for the students when they were greeted there. And it's absolutely sickening that our teachers would be trying to brainwash and force their personal politics on our kids. So, I would just ask you, as a school board, please look into that and take care of it appropriately. That's all. Thank you.
Our next item is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve that?
I move to approve consent agenda, item 2G. Second?
All those in favor? Six zero. Old business, adopt the 2021-22 budget and Revenue Neutral Rate Resolution.
Okay, we've talked about these last meeting. And so, again, we've had our public hearing at the beginning of this meeting. It's one of the board will see fit to adopt the budget and the Revenue Neutral Resolution at this time.
Are there any questions from board members? Any discussion? If not, I will enter seeing a motion.
I move to adopt the 2021-22 budget and the Revenue Neutral Rate Resolution number 082331.
Second?
All those in favor? Six zero. Approve CMS Student Handbook. Are there any questions? If not, I will enter seeing a motion.
I move to approve the 2021-22 Chisholm Middle School Student Handbook as presented.
Second? All those in favor? Six zero. Approve 2021-22 Substitute Handbook. Again, questions? No? I will take a motion.
I move to approve the 2021-22 Substitute Handbook.
Second?
All those in favor? Six zero. COVID Update.
Well, COVID is with us again this year. We were hoping we wouldn't be going through the things we are, but we have several things to discuss this evening. As is in the board notes for the agenda. Nurse Lehman put together a KDH grant that is going to allow us to acquire testing materials and also, she put in enough dollars to account for most of her salary and also allow us stipend for those nursing staff that are going to be doing extra duties associated with the COVID testing and things of that nature. So, in regard to that, we have approval from the Harvey County Health Department to allow an adjusted quarantine protocol for students that are considered close contacts. Because when you look at all of the data that we had last year, in terms of contacts, we had 2,666 students in quarantine. Positive cases that we knew about were 176. Informed COVID, informed of COVID with no contact info, in other words, 115 individuals, they were COVID positive, but we had no contact info with them in terms of close contacts. Positive contacts that became contact, pardon, positive COVIDs from contacts at a school, out of the 2,666, we had 10 kids, or 10 individuals, pardon, they're not just kids, 10 individuals that tested positive that were considered close contacts. So, in effect, we quarantined a lot of students through the Harvey County Health Department. I'll make that very clear. The school can't quarantine, we can exclude them, we can't quarantine. But the Harvey County Health Department issued orders to quarantine that number of students, and when we had 10 positive cases spin off of that, two of those were from athletic events. Okay, two of those individuals. So, what we want to do with this test-to-learn protocol is that essentially, if a student is considered a close contact, instead of them having to stay home for that quarantine period, they would have an option, the parents would have the option, and this is, all of this is optional on the part of the parents. If they wanted their kid to stay in school, they would be able to, they'd have to bring the kid in the morning, have the kid COVID-tested, okay? So, they'll do a rapid test, which takes about 15 minutes. The student would have to be socially distanced during the whole time that they're in school, and they'd also have to be masked during that whole time, during that quarantine period. But what that allows to happen is the kid remain in school. Now, and before, we don't have, we didn't have that option. If you'll notice in board docs, there is the guidance from the Harvey County Health Department that gives us that authority to do that. So, that is an option that we want to be able to provide parents. Now, I will say, I just saw tonight on the news that Mays, Mays is discontinuing that just based upon the number of close contacts that they were having to test, and it was essentially overwhelming them. We had a meeting this past Saturday, area superintendents to discuss that. And that particular superintendent said that some of his administrators and nursing staff were testing kids up until noon. So, it just, it was just overwhelming them. We don't, we won't know if we'll have that sort of an issue, but we want to be able to offer this to parents as well. I mean, it's either that or the students go home and they're quarantined for that amount of time. And as we have discussed in the past, with the legislation, remote learning isn't an option. We can have 40 hours of remote learning and then up to 240 hours with state-wide education approval and your state-wide education. So, it's kind of a complicated mess. And what we really want to do is try to keep kids in school. And this is a way that we think we can, we can do this. And we just want your approval to do so. And I'll stand for any questions you have about that.
What's the amount of quarantine time that you were just talking about?
Well, 10, 10 days for quarantine is the normal quarantine period. But if, if it's known that their contact was a variant of concern, it's up to 14 days.
What do you mean by variant of concern?
Um, the variants, well, the Delta variant, for example. And there were three other variants of concern, and I don't remember their, what their names were. The Delta's the one that we hear about the most. Now, we wouldn't have that information, that would be coming from the Harvey County Health Department, if they got to test back, because they send that, those sequences up to Topeka to be tested to determine what the variant of concern was that they encountered.
Fred, will you remind me how the students are identified as close contacts? Is that the child who's been exposed telling who was around them? I think there was a lot of confusion about that last year.
It's, you know, they'll ask the kid who they've been around, okay? They'll also ask the teacher, you know, based upon class arrangements, you know, who they've been around and things of that nature. They'll talk to their parent. They'll do multiple consultations. And the Harvey County Health Department does some of that as well. But here at school, what happens at school, you know, we initiate that in terms of trying to determine who those close contacts are. And that's one of the reasons, I feel, why we didn't have Harvey County internal spread last year.
Is there a distance that they're looking at, or is it on a time period?
The quarantine is the same, the six foot, within a 10-minute timeframe. Within 10 minutes, that really hasn't changed here. Some counties do things a little different, but Harvey County has not agreed to do anything different than the six foot. I mean, masks are irrelevant in terms of the actual determining whether or not you're a close contact.
Are we still considering, or do you know if Harvey County is still considering our last board meeting? They discussed possibly not considering somebody a contact if they're wearing a mask during that?
They are not in the, they are not considering doing that this time. That was the last time I talked to them, a week or so ago. Well, it was actually after the last board meeting. And that wasn't the part of the guidance that was released last Friday.
I think that would probably be the, one of the best chances of getting people to voluntarily wear that, if that's what we really want to accomplish.
The only way we can do this, the only way this, this, this state to learn is if they do wear their mask, you know, if they're a close contact.
Right, I know. For this new...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm just looking at 2,666 kids and thinking, how are we going to socially distance and test all these kids every single day?
Well, if we have 2,666 kids, we've got bigger issues. We're, that means we've got a ton of staff as well, and those staff, for example, that aren't vaccinated, that are also close contacts. So, we're, we will, this was never at one time. This was the whole year.
Right, I get that.
Yeah. Yeah, if we have that many at one time, then we got bigger problems.
That's near our entire student population.
Yes. I, you know, now Karen has more optimism than I do about how manageable this is going to be. And part of it goes back to our vaccination rate, and Harvey County frankly is pretty high. And so, those that are considered close contacts that are vaccinated don't have to quarantine unless they are symptomatic. You know, so that includes staff and students. So, you know, when you do the numbers with some of that, we just hope this surge won't be anything like what we had last year. But we are seeing an increased number of cases.
Is there a certain category where this 2,666 kids came from? Is it elementary, middle school, high school?
I could not tell you. I just asked you to give me the numbers, I did not ask you to break those down.
I'm just curious to know what buildings it's more likely to happen, if there's clusters or buildings or whatever from activities, and just the way they interact.
You know, when you, just looking at the data last year, I mean, just anecdotally, I can't give you anything. But it was, it was pretty spread. You know, and then you'd have like instances, for example, you know, like in a Cooper setting, for example. When you have something like that, a lot of times because of the proximity of the kids and the staff to one another, it would take out a whole class, for example.
Right, it's frustrating to hear that we had 10 out of that. But then I understand, because of taking action, maybe that's why we had 10.
Exactly.
And so, I get that. It's just frustrating. Because I think, you know, we have one kid, catch if we get 13 kids to get quarantined because of that, that's hard on those 13 kids when most of them are likely never to get it or have it.
And that's why we want to do everything we can to try to keep them in school.
Yeah.
You know, and the problem I can see happening, like in some classes, you know, if you have 10 kids that have to socially distance, I'm not sure how logistically that's going to work. We'll just have to work through those things.
I guess my big concern is the contact tracing too. I know everybody's trying their hardest, but it seems like there's a big margin for error in that, just with the kids recording and getting it from different places. And who's quarantining, healthy kids where? I mean, that's just a concern, Mike, because I just, I saw it last year, you know, and that we're quarantining kids, don't even quarantine. How are we going to prevent that? Testing?
I can't, well, I can't speak to that. I mean, we have to trust our professionals to do their job, and they're doing it to the best of their ability. I think that they, the Yomans were trying to work through all of these issues.
Can you tell me who's where that tests are being paid for by, like who they're getting paid? Who's paying some of that?
Well, part of it is through this grant. Any funds that, we'll get some testing supplies through the county, for example, through Harvey County. And the others will be taken care of through this grant.
And then we're paying staff extra to take on that?
Yes.
Out of the grant?
Out of the grant, yeah. No general fund dollars or LOV dollars are used.
Do we know how long we're thinking about running this play and what that's going to take? Any ideas?
I don't, no. You know, I hope we do it longer than Mays did. They were about a week.
And they stood their hands up, and that was it?
Well, like, like what Superintendent Higgins was saying, when you have your nursing staff, your health staff, and your administrators doing testing until noon, they're not doing any of the other medications and things like that for students or whatever other issues, and it just wasn't tenable for them. But they worked real hard to keep kids in school, and that's what we want to do with this as well.
So, as it stands right now, I mean, these kids are just going home.
Yeah, yeah.
So, this is just something to try and keep the kids in school.
Absolutely.
I can tell you, because I know what a lot of parents are thinking. I got a kindergartner and a first grader. There's no way I'm going to have them swab tested on a daily basis.
Yes.
They're just going to stay home. And we're just going to take care of them. They're going to be fine. Not everybody has those resources.
That's right.
So, I would love to explore options where, yes, we can keep the kids in school, but have them not have to go through this. And if there's any way we could push that, Harvey County, to say, can we not call them close contacts if they're wearing a mask or something? I just, I just, as a parent, I mean, I got little ones that they just wouldn't be going through that. I don't want to wear a mask either, to be honest with you.
Oh, I understand. And as a function of like the contract, when you look at the state-to-learn contract, we're, we're asking for the parents to be there to help with that.
That's right.
Which I'm thinking too, logistically, this could turn out to be just a real mess. But you also, okay, you also don't... But you also, okay, you also don't want an administrator or a nurse grabbing a kid by the back of the head to, to keep their, their head, you know, so you want the parent to do that, so we don't want to make parents angry in that regard. So we're kind of, we're kind of in, in a bad pickle any way you look at it. It's either that or they go home.
Yeah.
And we want to keep them here. And I don't see, unless you guys have some magic wand, I don't see them loosening or changing those, those guidelines, but once again, I'll reach out to Lynette and, and see what kind of the options are, and I'll pass on your sentiment. But this is the option that we have right now, which is better than just letting the kid go home and try to keep up on their homework, which is, which is not conducive either. I hate that as well.
So if they're a close contact and they're required to wear a mask for, let me say, the seven to 14 days or 10 to 14?
10 to 14, whatever the period of quarantine that they decide, because, you know, it could be that, that the contact was three days ago or something, I've gotten it just found out about it, but whatever the Harvey County Health Department determines, because they're doing all of the notifications for that.
So essentially, our hands have been tied by our county health department and by our state legislature, to where we have a choice of, actually, we give parents the choice of your kids go home and miss school for two weeks. Since we do not offer remote learning, thanks to those guidelines that have been set, so we don't offer the same virtual learning option that we had last year.
That's correct.
So we could either have parents, when the county tells their child to quarantine, because that's not from us.
That's correct.
The county sends this child home, they can take 10 to 14 days of no education.
They, they could, yes, I mean.
So then, and that's assuming that that's one time that they're quarantined. We had students that were quarantined multiple times. So each time, that child could miss two weeks of education.
Potentially, yes.
Worst case scenario. And then try to come back, and that teacher will try to catch the student up, and the student, any student would struggle being out that much. The other option is to approve this and go through daily testing, masking, there would be identifying factors that could not be avoided at that point for students in the classroom. I would like to think it's not so, but I think it would be naive to assume that staff would not treat these kids differently. Some staff members, some kids would not treat these other kids differently. And I know you and I talked about this. I do not love this plan. I quite frankly haven't loved anything that we've passed in the last year and a half. We don't get the option of passing something that's fantastic. We try to pass things that give us the best shot of keeping our kids in school, which a year ago, that was our biggest, one of our biggest concerns, was having the opportunity for kids to be in a classroom. We know that's where they learn best. So I do not love this option, I have a lot of issues with it, but we don't, we don't have control over some of these specifics. That's out of our hands. I would love to have control over that, but we do not. So I don't, I don't love it, not even sure I really like it at this point. But I think it's important to note that, number one, this little district did not come up with this option on our own. We did not create this, we have not gone rogue. This was in conjunction with the county health department, we're coming from them. So this was not just you or our district trying to finagle away to make this work. I know that rumor is out there. It also gives parents a choice. No child is forced to do daily testing, or wear a mask, or come to school. We said this a year ago, that we do not force any student or any staff member into our buildings, never have, never will. So parents, like Luke is saying, you've got, you and your family make that choice. I think parents need to absolutely make the choice that fits their family best. While I don't like this, I think it is important that we try to provide options for our families and for our kids. As Luke mentioned, some families might not have an option for their child to stay home. I don't love this test, thankfully it's not the super uncomfortable one that we had at the beginning. It's not that kind of nasal swab. Ideally, it would be great if we could do some sort of saliva test or something less invasive for these kids. That was a whole lot of talking to say, I don't love this, I don't really like it. But our other option is to send kids home with no chance of education.
The other option is what we're doing now up to this point, is that they're, they're at home on quarantine, and they'll, we'll send assignments home, and things of that nature, but, you know, there just isn't that, that capacity. Part of that's legislation. So, and I, I also think, folks, you gotta remember though, that the Harvey County Health Department are, they're doing the best they can as well. Everybody's trying to balance things out as much as they can. Everybody's in a, in a tough spot to be evaluated and judged based on what they do or don't do, just like you're gonna be evaluated tonight on what you do or don't do. We've all gotten the feedback about what we should be doing repeatedly.
I think for me, as I look at this and I started looking at CDC numbers and 20 and under, and they were, it was real old with no treatment, right? For 20 and under, it's 99.997 survival rate, and I know that's real, I know COVID, I lost a cousin and I lost a friend I played college football with, so he wasn't that old, I know I'm getting older, but he wasn't that old. And, and so it's real, it's out there. And, but with our kids, when we're focusing on the kids, I would just support people to talk to the right people about what's going on with that, and why are we being bootstrapped when those are a real number? And it's hard for us because we need our kids in the building. So for me, to keep our kids and give them an opportunity to have a choice to be in the building, I'm gonna do that. If this is all we got, it's all we got, but I would like to push the health department or whoever is in that position to get us some different types of kids, because I don't want my daughter with something like that either. It's just not something that I'm cool with, because I've had to do it like seven or eight times, and it wasn't fun, and I hope it's not what I've had to go through seven or eight times, because every time I've traveled abroad or in certain areas, I, you know, I've had to come back and quarantine myself and get that deal done. Just not fun. I don't like to have my eyes watering and my brain tickling, you know? So anyways, all that to be said, that, yeah, Mallory, I agree with you, this is terrible, but unless we put pressure on the right people, and you, when you look at 20 and under and look at that number, what are we doing?
And we may, if we pass this tonight, I'm not making any assumptions, I don't know where you all stand, we may not have a single parent sign up to take this opportunity, and that's fine, that is absolutely their choice. I'm not going to try to persuade anyone one way or another, but I, I do feel that at least providing this option, if somebody does want that and their child is comfortable with that, they have that choice. But if not, then absolutely don't do that if that's not what your family wants to do.
And I feel really uncomfortable saying, it's this or nothing, they don't go to school. I don't think there's always just two ideas and that's it. And if we read this, I mean, thank you for putting it up, but be available to assist with the nasal swab, rapid testing by securing their student if needed. We don't want to do this for our own kids, I'm sure none of these parents want to do that to their kids, I couldn't imagine doing that. Be available to take the student home if they test positive in the morning at school. The student will report to the nurse's office first thing every morning of their quarantine. Cooperate with nasal swab, rapid COVID testing. Wear a mask while at school during their designated quarantine period, and maintain six feet distance from others while at school. I just can't imagine being a kid, like being so ostracized doing that. I, I just feel very uncomfortable even reading this. And I know everyone's trying their best to keep these kids at school, but I feel like there should be some middle ground here.
I, I don't know what that middle ground is, I really don't.
I mean, what would make it nice, the way it's written up, is if we push masks on our kiddos, then that takes away a lot of the stuff, right? I mean, that's, read between the lines, if I'm correct on that? That, yes.
According to the health department, even if your mask does not change or goes on that.
Does not change, okay, so that's not, okay.
This is one of those where the mask, the assumption that you're protecting others, because you could be positive.
Right.
Could we have Lynette come and talk to us about different options?
Sure, or if you wanted to schedule one between now and then, absolutely. She's great about, she's great about, about coming to talk and, and working you through, walking you through stuff. There, there, once again, I'm gonna restate this, these folks aren't trying to do, to do anything nefarious, they're, they're working their tails off too. I mean, we may not agree with everything they're doing, but they're doing the best they can to make their decisions as well.
At the very least, I would have been that line, the parent will be available to assist nasal swab, rapid testing if needed, I would just, I would stick with that. It just sounds horrible just to say, if you're needed, you're gonna come secure your student while we stay this up for now. It's just, the securing their student part is just like, it's just very harsh language. I would admit that, take that out of there, and then maybe.
Well, but we do, we, but we, we do want the parent available to assist, because you don't want, you don't want somebody, you don't want me grabbing the back of the kids when the nurse is doing their thing.
But I think if you say, be available to assist if needed, I think that says enough, in my opinion.
So what, what have we removed? I, I guess.
No, by securing their student part is just, yeah.
I promise you, we're not gonna have any strap boards or anything like that.
It just looks, it doesn't look right to me.
We are in absolutely terrible, no win ugly situation with our kids.
I don't like any of it, I mean, I'm kind of with you guys, and we're here, it's just... There's nothing from a school standpoint that we can do anything for these kids that are quarantined?
Well, I mean, there's always options, I guess, in that regard, we just have to look at how we can facilitate that. I mean, I went as far as to think, okay, we can hire some substitutes and just serve in the homework hotline capacity for those kids that might need help. But you think about that from a, from a K-12 perspective, you know, the teachers, substitute teachers don't always have expertise in all of those areas. So I've even talked to neighboring superintendents who do come together and hire some substitutes. And we'd love to develop like an after-school support, support call-in program or something like that, where kids can call in to get academic assistance, but you're still not going to have that instruction, that direct instruction in class given place, okay? Whenever we direct our teachers, if you have to do the remote learning option, that's when our 40-hour clock starts with every individual student. And our teachers are pretty tapped out too, sorry, man.
So you said, so each student gets 40 hours, or, or is it?
By student.
It's by student.
If we go over the 40 hours, our board of education has to give us permission to do so, up to 240. That list of students then has to be approved by the state board of education as well.
And is an old school, they just consider eight hours or six hours?
405 minutes, so multiply that by six, we will get it. So you're only going through a week. They're not even going through a week.
If you do 40 hours and you divide that, that's, that's what, five, five, a little over five days for the whole year?
So about 6.75 hours a day is what, about what our instruction will give you.
So it does not cover one quarantine period?
No, does not. And that's, that's a direct result of legislation that was passed. That's not the KSDE, Kansas State Board of Education, that is the legislature.
And you said you could go up to 240, there's a certain exception, what was that?
Um, there were like three levels of exception, one of would be, I had to go back and look at the exact language of, of it again, but there were three levels of exception where you could do that. One of was vague enough, you could put a lot of things into that, but the other two, natural disaster, and then something else, and then a big category that could account for a lot of other things. And I honestly, folks, don't know of any district in the area that, in, in the region that's, that's providing that as an option based upon that legislation. When does this become fun?
Oh, it's hoping soon.
Yeah, me too.
We haven't had that many fun.
It's not been long enough. So if for some reason this does not get approved, then, then what does it look like?
Then the quarantine kids are staying home. We would also try to do this with staff, for example, we've got some staff that can, can do part of their work remotely, they can't do all of their work remotely, so we're looking at those quarantine staffless percentages, but if they could, they could also follow this protocol, we would, we would allow those that are not vaccinated to do that, because if they're vaccinated, they don't have to follow the protocol. That will help us up at the high school, or anybody 12 and under or over that has been vaccinated. So that, that alone will help our numbers as it relates to this. But we're talking all the littles, like, that's what you guys said, not all the littles, but many of them.
So, right, we take action on this today, possibly, we have kids back at school.
Yes.
I don't know what else choice we have until we get in that, with her, figure out, because we can't wait to give families that opportunity, in my opinion. That's my two cents.
I don't know what my two cents is, honestly. This is a bad situation that we have been put in.
So I'm just trying, sorry, I'm trying to picture, so we go with this, and our kids, their close contacts will wear masks, whether they've been vaccinated or not vaccinated?
Well, if the kids, if the person's been vaccinated and they're close contact, as long as they're asymptomatic, they don't have to.
Okay, and if they're unvaccinated?
Then they have to either quarantine or they follow this protocol, if they want to be in school.
Which is to test daily.
Test daily, wear your mask, and socially distance.
So that is use social distance in the classroom?
You do the best you can, you will, you will put them in a place to wear.
Put them in a place?
Put them in the classroom, you know, but they're there, and they're, they're listening, they're learning, and hopefully paying attention, you know, hopefully taking part.
So you say no district has done it yet?
You mean providing academic support?
And gone about the 40 hours and applied for that waiver?
Well, I don't know if anybody's gone about 40 hours.
Or they're not.
I don't know any that are, that, none that I have talked to have said that they are going to offer remote learning as an option for these kids. None.
What would it look like if we didn't? I have a, I have a lot of issues with this, but it's my job up here is to provide opportunity for education for all students. I have an incredibly hard time being so dismissive and saying, go home, we'll see you in a couple of weeks. I feel like we should, and I know we're exhausted, everybody is exhausted, but we have to keep trying and doing everything we can think of for our kids.
I, I don't, I don't think that like any teacher or administrator is being dismissive. I, I think that, you know, what they did last year trying to provide those, that remote opportunity was, was a disaster. I mean, it was just so hard on our staff, and to, to expect that of them again this year would be pretty difficult. We would have to hire more teachers, which we didn't fill our staffs this year, you know, to provide some sort of academic support somehow electronically.
And I know that last year was a year we never want to repeat, and I'm not suggesting that it be to the level of what we did last year, but to provide some sorts of academic support to students on some level, is there anything we could do?
Well, there's always options. I mean, like I said, we look at how we just, I, I don't want to call it a homework hotline because we wouldn't do that, but we could hire, we could see if there were some teachers that want some additional time after school to be available to provide direct support. We would not call it remote learning, and it's just a homework hotline type of it, you know. You know, but like to try to recreate the classroom every day, you really have to have a remote classroom setting, and that, that does, they fall into that category. I'd want to be real careful about, I don't want to be in the test case that they, they determine whether or not they're gonna take away our funding based upon us going or playing rules, or playing games with the rules as it relates to that.
And I can understand that standpoint, but when our hands have been tied to work on quarantine time, it's longer than the allotted amount of time you've been given, I don't consider that playing the game. And I don't mean that in a negative sense towards you, we are literally backed into a corner.
We are.
And so you said there's a difference in how we handle the kids that are vaccinated?
Yes.
Is there any talk about handling the kids that have confirmed cases, prior to confirmed cases of COVID?
Oh, it's within six months, man, I did not look that, but I think it said if they've had a positive test, positive COVID test within six months, I have to look at the actual.
But the vaccine's good for?
They did not specify how many.
This is discrimination against unvaccinated kids. That might be a question more for Lynette.
Yeah, I mean.
It sounds like perhaps we need to visit with Lynette and have some questions answered. Clearly, there's a number of concerns across the board with this, nobody is going. Clearly, there's a number of concerns across the board with this. Nobody is going low to pass it. And in full support, but we also do not want to just let our kids fall by the wayside in the meantime. So I, I wish we had a great answer tonight, but I don't feel that we're there. I think we have a lot more questions to ask and get some more clarification and see if there's any possible way we can provide some instruction to our kids. I don't want to think about how far, and I hate to say how far they'll fall behind, but I hate to think of the struggles that they were going to have, not just for those two weeks, but this is compounding. We're on our third school year of this. These kids are struggling and they will struggle for a very long time. And I cannot sleep at night knowing that we have not tried absolutely everything to teach our kids whenever possible. I don't know exactly what that looks like because we don't have a lot of control, but I just feel like maybe there's something else we can do. And I don't want to overwhelm our staff. They've done a great job. Our job is to try to teach kids. I, I, we just have to keep trying, thinking, figure something out. I don't know what it is. And I'm sorry, that's not helpful, but I can't just throw my hands up.
When I, when I pose this to groups of superintendents and when they pose it, or someone else does, it doesn't matter. Uh, everybody is looking at each other the same way. Yeah, we, we, we need and want to do something, but how? I, I mean, honestly, because it's easy to say just offer two hours of academic support. Well, somebody's got to make sure the kid gets on, knows what questions they even ask. The kid's not receiving the direct instruction. Um, you know, some teachers will just do this on their own. And I, you know, I put out that note a couple of weeks ago saying, I cannot direct you to do this. But you've got to think about it from the perspective of when that kid comes back, they're going to be that much further behind anyway. If you can provide some help, it's unofficial, we're not counting the time, I would, I would encourage, no, I can't even say I'll encourage you. I'm totally cool with you doing that. Because I'm not going to put anything like that in writing or on video either.
Well, I think there's work to be done here to try to figure some things out, have some of our questions answered from the Harvey County Health Department. Um, the way this is now, I'm concerned about the outcome if we go with this, um, as far as separating students and not having them in the classroom or being masked and not masked.
Well, they'll be in the classroom. And what we'll do is like, like in the elementary, for example, they'll pod up and get tighter with another group perhaps and then have this kid over here, this kid over there. I mean, they can logistically figure some of that out. Those class sizes aren't so big this year, those section sizes aren't, they can't, can't logistically do some of those things in a classroom.
Right, well, so if you have a classroom of 25 students and you have one person that's a close contact from another class, how do you, I mean, how are you going to social distance that one from the other 24?
You would just logistically arrange your room to where that kid has six feet, you know, six feet perimeter.
So they're separated from the other kids by six feet.
Yeah, but they're at school.
So what if you have 20 out of the 25?
So it might last a lot tougher.
That's what I don't like, that's what I don't like about this.
I, I understand, but it's either this or we don't do it. I mean, it's really, we're, we're, this is a binary choice when it comes to this protocol.
Fred, I just want to say thank you. You, you've done an excellent job this year, last year. I can't imagine what you're going through on a daily basis. And, and I think we're, we're not attacking.
Oh, I don't.
I know, I know it probably seems like that at times. We're just asking questions, but you're doing an excellent job and we appreciate it, really.
No, absolutely.
And I also know that you present things which you don't love, but they're put on your desk for you to present to us sometimes. I get that. We got different roles and like Matt said, I don't want it to seem like we're attacking you. We're not. You know, I ask lots of questions.
But you're the messenger, Fred.
And seriously, and I know, I, I know folks aren't going to be happy about this, but I'll, my, my comment will be, just like it has been, it's either that or they stay home. You know, and I just, I hate it worse that they, that the parent doesn't have a choice in this. And I know you think the choice stinks. Don't disagree with that. But it's either that or, you know, they're staying home and you've got to figure out daycare, for example, or whatever it might be. In this case, it might be that you, you're late to work because you got to help us test the kid, and that stinks too. There's nothing about this that is going to be positive, other than the kid would otherwise be at home.
There's things not to love about the plan, but there's things not to love about where we're at right now.
Absolutely.
It's not hurting inaction. It's not, not, not paying, in my opinion, right now. We need to get the kids in school, do whatever we can to make that happen. I just want to highlight one thing, and this is feedback on October. That was said, I don't want to tell kids to go home. So in our COVID guidelines, it says under contacts, USD 373 staff will not send a kid contacts home. USD 373 is not the one doing that, okay? It says right after that, Harvey County Health Department will contact parents and inform them of quarantine status. So just to be clear, we're really not USD 373 telling that kid to go home. They're, if they're following the quarantine guideline, they're following Harvey County Health Department's.
So if we don't pass this today, what happens? What happens if the kid is positive tomorrow?
Well, just like we have, we've got five, maybe more active cases right now. When the kid's positive, they go through the contract tracing protocol, they determine who the close contacts are, those individuals are contacted and they're told when they can come back to school, period.
Like last year, but no.
Yeah, just like last year, nothing has changed. This is the only protocol change in terms of the quarantine piece.
But even though you don't like it, this is the only way to have kids in the classroom?
If they're close contacts, that is accurate. And we would also apply, apply this to staff as well that are not, um, that are not vaccinated. If they, if they are, um, want to work, then they'll have to follow the same procedure. So then that means that Mr. Treacher is going to have to be the parent that's going to hold the head of the staff member, right?
And I don't have so much issue with staff members since they're adults and they can make their decisions and they can do their thing. That's their choice.
So I just need, number one, the, the motion to, um, to provide the additional nurse stipends. Because they'll be doing a lot of extra work as it is with this anyway. And then you want, you can move to approve this testing protocol or we just don't do it.
I moved to approve the additional stipends for nursing staff, $2,000 from the KBH grant to assist in COVID testing.
Second.
All those in favor? Six, zero. Nobody making a motion yet on the next one? I haven't decided how I would vote. Gosh.
Well, while you're thinking, we can make sure that everyone knows that grant award is $141,027. That's a, that's a, that's a big deal. When we start talking, it's going to pay for a whole nurse salary and then the stipends and then testing supplies and some other things as well, some room ionizers, some things else.
And huge thank you to Kira because it is not easy to go through a grant application process, so I appreciate her extra time and effort doing that. That's huge.
And I can tell you, they've already put in a lot of hours, contact tracing over the weekend, communicating with the Harvey County Health Department and staff and things like that. So this is last weekend I heard here in work both days.
So are we going to be thinking about a backup plan in case this doesn't work like it needs, or we're just making it work?
Um, Karen is tremendously optimistic and I just, like I told her, I don't share your optimism, but I will, will, I would, we'll, we'll just see how it goes.
I'm curious, how does this apply to the activities, extracurricular, extracurricular activities? Um, if they're, if we're allowing them to come back to school, it doesn't really say anything specifically.
They, they would have to, in order to participate, they'd have to socially distance, they'd have to wear their mask and they'd have to, um, be tested every day.
So essentially.
Kind of hard to play football when you're coming back, right? I guess, but to give that kid the ball. Give that kid the ball. I honestly, I, I didn't even, Luke, you know, you think you have your bases, I didn't even think about that. All I've been thinking about seriously is school. That would be a question I have to just give clarification on. I think this was just in-school participation though. I don't think it, I don't think it doubled back to, if I remember right, but I could be wrong.
Do you all feel that you have enough information and answers tonight to make this decision? Or is this something that maybe we want Lynette to answer some more questions on and then come back to it? Do you have questions that have not been answered tonight?
I mean, I think it puts us in a better position than we're in right now. The only question to ask is what can we do to get in an even better position from there? So for me, I mean, I, again, I said before, I love it, but I don't look over at it right now. So I'd be willing to vote based off of that, that I feel like it does offer an option. But is it the best option? No. Is there different conversations we could have? See what else we can do? Yes. But, uh, this would be, I guess, it's some step that opens up options for the parents.
So if this choice is provided tonight, would we be able to get kids back in school possibly tomorrow? How many is that? How many are we looking at?
Um, well. I mean, right now we have 45 students across the district that are in quarantine. It was 30 on Friday.
All ages, all the way across.
All the way across the board.
How many positives do we have again?
Um. Five? Well, hold on. Six. It was five at five o'clock. And that information too, we're posting on our COVID webpage, just the number of cases, student cases in our district. We've got that set up where it'll be updated, so. We're not going to place buildings on there because if there's only one, one kid in a building, for example, kind of becomes an identifier because the word gets out, it's Johnny, you know, and it may not be, and we, we're trying to protect the, the names.
I appreciate the option for parent choice, but I am very concerned about the logistics of this and aside from the testing piece, I'm very concerned with how students will be treated in their classroom. And I understand that that would be a parent's choice to have them in that position. And I would like to presume positive intent at all times, but we know through this last year, that's not always 100% accurate. So if we approve this tonight and we have Lynette come in and provide additional information to our questions, can it be changed?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, you, you guys are the board. You, you, you'll adopt this tonight, you'd adopt the next one.
I don't like it at all, but I think it gets some kids in school, and I think that's one of my primary focuses.
Potentially.
Potential.
Who's to say if the parents didn't want to do it?
Sure, absolutely.
And we may not have a single family that does this. I don't know.
True that.
And we'll take out that sentence. At least I got Luke, I got it crossed out, at least that by securing their student.
Yes, just assistance.
Can you quickly explain what this, what type of test this is?
It's an antigen test. I, I don't, you know.
It is not the.
You don't go to tickle the brain?
No.
No, it's, it's a nasal swab, but, but some kids it's stuff to do that way.
Some adults and stuff can do that as well.
They don't, they don't tickle the brain with this.
How quickly can we have a conversation with Lynette? Clearly, I know that we don't know her schedule, but our next board, board meeting is three weeks away. That's a very long time. I would like to have conversation before three weeks from now, if that all comes along.
We can do that.
And I don't know how you guys feel. If you would want to call a special board meeting, have three board members go to where it's not an official meeting.
I think you all have questions.
I think so. So you would be fine having a special sit-down? Okay. I don't want to wait three weeks.
But, but I, I do think, I, I, just like everybody else, I'm not crazy about this, but I think it gives an avenue. My high school, if he was a close contact, I don't think he'd have a problem with this. My seventh grader, she probably, this might be a little bit harder for her, so it's probably keep her home, but, you know, I think, we got, I think it's just an option for people. And so at least in the short term, I'd like to go ahead and approve, maybe we'll get a few kids back in school tomorrow, maybe not, I don't know. That's my thoughts.
And like we said, I struggle with this a lot, but one piece that I came back to is parent choice. And this is an avenue for parents to have a choice and a say in the matter. Or not, whatever they decide is up to them. Does anyone want to make a motion for it?
Um, I moved to approve the COVID testing protocols as we were saying, uh, for the USD 373 students.
My second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Passes four, two. And Fred, with this, um, like a number of us have said we had concerns with if students come back, how, how that will play out. How can I say this politely? Will conversations be had and will things be followed up? I want to make sure that I understand guidelines, but I want to make sure that our students are not feeling ostracized or not feeling, um, discriminated against, segregated in any way. I do not want any of our students at any point to ever be treated differently from staff for any reason. COVID or not, I don't want that to happen. So can you just follow up with this?
Yeah.
I would greatly appreciate that, because I can assume there will be concerns that are raised.
I'll shut up after this one, but how aggressive are we going to be to get that meeting set up, like tomorrow?
I don't plan on having the meeting tomorrow.
No.
But, but I'll wait out. Oh, yeah, I'll wait out, yeah, yeah. She's great about, about doing that. I, I guess it would be, you know, part of your folks' availability as well. I mean, um, I, I, I'll have to ask her for a few dates and then, you know, it's kind of hard not to get you guys where we can find a, a common time to do that. So what you might want to do is, is consider, uh, dates and times. If you haven't thought about that now, I mean, this is the COVID update, we'll update it, right?
I'm not available on the 31st of August. So.
I, I think, well, I was just going to say, I think it's best if you get a few dates required and then try to coordinate.
Okay.
Do we want to choose?
It's going to be impossible.
Do we want to shoot for this week? Do we want to shoot for next week?
I think try to meet as soon as we can, sure. Obviously not tomorrow, but.
Yep, yep, we'll do that.
Do you guys have a strong preference for in-person or Zoom? What does it matter?
In-person.
I'd rather be in person than on Zoom.
We've got to make sure, yeah, we've got to have Sam do at least one more, one more.
Oh, yeah.
What's her last name? The way of tier four meetings before that?
Well, we can schedule, okay.
Oh, that's the greatest.
Good excuse to do it.
Oh, mercy. Okay, new business. Approved gift request. Okay, I move to approve the gift, the gift request as presented in, um, in four talks.
Are you guys seeing them out of order?
I don't know. I am seeing the same order she's seeing.
I've got, yeah, approved gift request.
It's number one.
I've got new business A. Do you have something different?
They jumped out to see online.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor? Six, zero. Okay, yes, our items are the same as what is on the screen. The next item is approved administrator wage rates. Fred, do you want to speak to this at all?
Well, um, I can. Um, we're looking at a 1.5, um, increase to the base administrator, class five director index as, as presented. Dr. Weber and his group, uh, and his team. So that's what we could, we could, we could do. So, David, if you have anything there that you want to?
Um, yeah, I mean, I do. I think that it is not the same percentage that we're suggesting for the classified personnel. It's less, but I think we felt that folks in leadership roles were willing to do that to also make sure that the classified folks and the teachers knew that we were making them a priority within the funding structure. And I think that that hopefully sends that message. And for sure, for those administrators and those directors out there listening, it's not because you're not appreciated. Actually, it's the exact opposite. We appreciate you very much. It's just that in these tighter budget times, making sure that those positions that are, that are face-to-face with our students and that are working extra hard in those buildings know that we're supporting them. Supporting them.
One thing that I will comment on, I guess, as well, I guess, I passed it off to David, but, you know, historically, from what I understand, that's kind of been the history in the district where they haven't given administrative compensation, that same percentage. I, you know, I don't know if I agree with that always. It almost says that you kind of don't value their contribution as much, and you've got to remember, last year, neither classified nor administrative or directors received any sort of same increase. Teachers received depth and column, and that was it. So, you know, I know that we're looking at decreased enrollment, and so when we talk about all these things, it's always tough. But we, what we presented is essentially what has been past practice. I just don't know if I agree with that past practice. So that's something to use a board. You could direct us to research a little more because I think, I think it's pretty safe to say that the administrators and directors are working just as hard as everyone to ensure that things are taking place. And I don't want them to feel that we don't value that. So please tell me to break from history, and I will be more than happy to look into ways we can do that.
I am okay with you breaking away from history. Just, you don't have to do things the way you've always done them. I know everyone has really stepped up this year. Every staff member has done so much, and administrators have really taken on a lot of extra pieces, a lot of extra time that typically would not have been done. So I would love to see that checked into and looked at. Thank you. I will add to the motion.
I'll vote to approve the administrator and director wage rates as presented.
Second. All those in favor? Six-zero. Approved classified wage rates.
All right, so here, what we are recommending is a 2.5 increase to every section of the, of the, of the classified positions. And so ultimately, that ends up being about $169,000 for the total cost. But it is very similar to what the dollar value was for the teachers' negotiations. We felt pretty strong that keeping them as close as possible was a good move. And so that's why we're presenting this to you all today.
I move to approve the classified wage rates as presented.
Second.
All those in favor? Six-zero. And next item is to approve the adjustment to current open maintenance position and a certified HVAC technician.
We've got a couple of problems to address here with this. One of them is, at one time, and I don't know how recent in history that is, it's been some time, they have four HVAC technicians on staff here in the district. Right now, we have one certified HVAC tech, okay? I got a report today, we had nineteen units that were not functioning properly. Half of them were down. I got another report afterwards, the two more units are down. One certified HVAC person cannot do that. So what we're having to do is get outside contracted services for that. Those folks are awfully busy too, and they're not as responsive when you need them today. I recommend, we have an open maintenance position right now. I want to hire a certified HVAC person. I would also recommend that we look to add actually two because I can guarantee you we will make up our money in terms of outside contracted services with that additional one. And also, our current HVAC, certified HVAC technician has about three hundred and eight or nine days left until he retires. And we've got to have, when you've got eleven or twelve facilities that have HVAC units that need to be running, when they need to be running, we need to have that transition opportunity. So if we bring in, if we have to bring in the one, if I could get two, then that would allow us to make sure that we, we won't have any issues with respect to, or as many issues. We're still going to have issues. We have to remember, we have older units that are at end-of-life, and they're going to malfunction, but we will make our money with, we will not lose money in the hiring of these two. If you approve two.
I move to approve the district hired two certified HVAC technicians.
Second.
All those in favor? Six-zero. Next item, approve adjusted job description.
We want to make a couple of changes with job description areas up in my office. One of them is, we would like for HR to take over direct supervision of payroll, which to me makes a lot of sense because when you start thinking of what they do in payroll with contracts, wages, training, and things of that nature, it makes more sense for them to be under that department than just under the business department. Also, with respect to, and with that, there will also be a change in compensation, obviously, with the increased duties. In David's office, I want there to be more participation in project and facilities from a capital perspective. He's not going to be supervising the maintenance director. That's still going to be my task. But I want more coordination in terms of what we're doing from a project perspective so that I feel more, we will feel better. This isn't just for me. This is for looking five years down the road. We need to have more people that know what's going on as it relates to some of these things. And this will help to increase some of that, so. And I'll stand for any questions you have.
I move to approve the revision to the human resource director and administrative director job descriptions as presented.
Second. All those in favor? Six-zero. Hourly wage increase for bilingual aides and building administrative assistants.
Now, we targeted two specific areas with this, and the reason we have is that those are all the positions that are going to be more in direct contact with students or parents. We have a great need for those individuals, number one, and we hope that we can get more bilingual individuals on staff because there's a lot of informal translation that takes place. Right now, part of our process is we have several translators across the district that are accessible. But, you know, in an informal type of a setting where a parent's coming in and just needs to have a question answered, you know, what our protocol is, that person would clock out, clock back in as the translator, do the translation, come back and clock back in. We would still do those kinds of things with documents and other more formal translation settings like an IEP or something like that. But for some more of this informal type of thing, it would help cover that because we have a lot of our Paris, well, not Paris, pardon me, aides, who are not including Paris with this because that's a special education cooperative thing, that they have to consider that at the next special education meeting, but I haven't even talked with Reagan about it. So she's sitting on the back row going, what are you talking about? But this would be a way to maybe also increase the longevity of some of those staff that we have in those positions. But it would be only building, office, administrative assistant, and then aides. We would not consider that at this time for anyone else. They would essentially have to validate a skill set, and we're working on assessments for that. They would get fifty cents if they are good with translating the written word, fifty cents an hour if they're good with translating the verbal translation. So just something to try to increase what we have.
Matt, I don't know. First of all, I don't remember which side of the table I was on when this conversation took place. But I know that at one point, the district was talking about checking into using a phone service for translation because it would offer multiple languages. I know we do have a number of bilingual families, so we've struggled with that for a number of years. Do you remember anything?
I just remember us talking about it, but then beyond that, I don't remember anything else.
One thing that we are looking, because, you know, some people say you just hire via translator. Yeah, that works great if the translator's in your building when you need it. But if this building needs it, and this building needs it, and that parent is coming in, they can't be two places at once. So part of this will take care of some of that, but we're also looking at a service that we would actually subscribe to, and they would be charging by the minute, for example. So the phone service, I think, what, two hundred and thirty hours was around ten grand, okay? If we had two hundred and thirty hours of translation service provided. And so, you know, that's, to me, that is a solution, and it would deal with more than just Spanish. It would deal with those other nineteen languages, I believe, that we have to support across the district because it's not just Spanish.
I would, I know we've talked about this. We, the district has talked about this for a number of years, and that has been an issue. I personally feel like we need to really try to move forward. We have a lot of bilingual families. We know that we are not serving them to the best of our ability, and I am not comfortable leaving them at that status as it is. So I appreciate you looking into that. I'm excited to see.
We hope to have something for you, and it's at the, maybe not the first September board meeting, but hopefully by the first September board. That's my goal.
Great, thank you. Okay, I continue work here. Santa Fe campus update. Another fun one tonight.
Yeah, we had some damage to Lindley Hall in late June, as everyone knows. I informally sent out information to board members, but I wanted to kind of let the public kind of know, and we can have a conversation about this. The exterior structure of Lindley Hall, as you know, has been cordoned off, and it will remain that way for quite some time. I got the official report tonight at six o'clock, so I've not even had a chance to look at that. But the parapet walls have essentially, essentially separated away from the building. And so we've got the bowing of those walls, essentially, you know, this gravity is the only thing holding that up. And once you get up to the very top of the building, and I've got some pictures of me pulling out, for example, a brick from underneath one of the capstones. There's no, there's essentially very little mortar, and there's a lot of organics also within the mortar joints, right? So the walls are essentially pulling apart from the facility, right? So the exterior is, is something that's unsafe and will remain that way until the decision's made by the board, what you want to do with the facility, okay? To repair that, you're looking at the exterior itself, probably a million and a half, maybe two billion dollars. I don't know, just, that's just off the top of my head because they essentially have to tear down the exterior of the walls and then reapply all those bricks and then tie that to the structure with the brick ties and so on. We were very concerned about the interior of the structure because I just don't feel comfortable unless we had someone come in and give us some ideas. So he was here a couple of weeks ago. I did go through the building with him, Mr. Schaefer and I did. You can see physical separation where the bleachers are. So the very top of the bleachers where you've got your trusses that come down to the floor of the bleacher there, you can actually see where the walls that are attached to the bleachers section, the concrete section, in the corners especially, there's some separation, all right? One of the ways to kind of determine, you know, how recent that separation is, is to see when the last time that was painted. Well, they found a paint candle, like I said, 2018 or 2019 on it, and so there was that line of separation. So there's been some movement since then, but we don't know how much. I'm not willing to take a chance to put kids in there, you know, until we can really kind of isolate some of that. I'm not that excited. If you were to talk to a building inspector, and they said, yes, it's usable, but what you would want to make sure you do is you can't use the bleachers, okay? Because if the building walls were to fall out, okay, and the trusses were to come down, they're probably going to land on those bleachers above, you know, in terms of their, and those trusses are structurally, they're steel, steel beams, and, you know, they probably won't get away because they're not weak enough to bow in the middle. Now, I don't know about you, but as a, as a parent, I wouldn't want my school saying it's okay for us to use the gym floor. And we don't know, those walls could last another hundred years, but I don't feel that comfortable with that. So I just kind of want to put that out there. I'll look over that report. I'll pass that on to you, so you can look it over as well. There are options where, like I said, they could use the gym if it wasn't like high winds or we had a lot of snow on the roof and things like that. We can get some sensors that we adhere to the cracks. But all I can think of is Florida, right, and the apartment complex is coming down. And, you know, and I, I just don't think that it's a good situation. I would not, I would not feel comfortable recommending that we do that. Heidi and her staff have done a great job of coming up with alternatives. With respect to PE, that's the biggest use issue we'll have. We may continue laundry services, which we have the laundry services over in that building with our adults. We're going to have to make sure that we have a tunnel that, that they can successfully access that. You know, I feel okay with that. That's a usable thing, but I wouldn't want to put kids in there for any sort of activities. So when, when I get a chance to look through that report, I think we just have to have a pretty serious conversation about what are the next steps? To raise the building, you're talking a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. To build a new facility like that, you're talking, you know, two to four million dollars, depending on how much you want out of it. To repair that with the exterior or interior walls, you're talking two to three, three and a half million dollars. None of that is in our capital outlay budget. So hate to be the bearer of bad news, but I'd rather tell you as opposed to us taking the chance, putting kids in there and regretting it later. So any questions?
Once again, a poor situation to begin, but I do appreciate your openness and transparency during this, especially when it comes to facilities. I in our community sometimes feels that they have not been presented with accurate information. So even though we're not making a decision tonight, I appreciate you being open about that and putting it out there for the community to understand what we're doing, what our options would be.
One thing to keep in mind is that the maintenance issues aren't associated with things that haven't been done in the last decade. They're associated with things that haven't been done during the course of that building being cut. If you don't top point those motor joints and stuff like that, you're going to have moisture get in there. It dissolves the metal ties between the parapet and the structural wall piece. So this isn't something that's just a decade-old problem. And I think it wasn't that many years ago, from what I understand, that there was a building in town that
A decade ago.
Had some structural issues and felt this could be the same type of a deal.
If no questions, our next item is an ESR update.
Okay, just to give you a little bit of information, and then you'll get to see some concept. We're going to actually talk about education a little bit tonight, which will be a novel idea. Our ESR application, we still haven't received word from the state board of education in terms of their approval. We have a few questions we had to answer, but those were done. Hopefully, it'll be at the September board meeting, we get that, that full approval. So, you know, we have started rolling with some things, like the Prairie View, mental health services we're going to be able to provide. If, if the ESR funds didn't come through, we could cover that. I haven't felt comfortable yet with going on with the three liaisons that we would hire until we get that full approval, and then we'll pull that trigger as soon as we do get that. I know in some buildings that they've all tried to find additional academic SEL support and other support. They're also looking at getting started with some academic after-school programs. That is a place, like at the high school, for example, I know Caleb, you have, you've got some stuff started for some schedules for some after-school programming for students. That's where some academic support could possibly be set up for some of those high school kids. So we're really excited about, about that. And I wanted Caleb to come up and talk a little bit about the student of concern. If you remember, when we were talking about the additional SEL aid, support aids that would be at the, at the Chisholm level and below, I said the high school is going to have something a little bit different. So they want to, they want you to see what their, their proposal or plan is for that. So I will turn it over to Caleb if you want to get going, or do you need to hook up or anything?
I don't think so. We can just go over the two files in there that you guys have. The first part of our PowerPoint is actually in relation to our strategic plan, but that encompasses the student of concern process. And I put on the second slide of that presentation all the acronyms that we use and what those mean, so that you can, if you use one of those, you can reference that, what we're talking about if you're not familiar. The strategic plan, though, has an area that's related to helping students catch up or get back on track if they fell behind during COVID. But also just because anytime you have kids that are dealing with academic issues that we need to be able to consistently identify when they're having those and it helps them get back on track. One of the things that we tried to do with this new process is to make it ongoing because sometimes you'll have kids that are doing fine, and then all of a sudden, something happens in their life that causes them to start going downhill with their academics. And so the way we've built this process is that we don't just assume that that kid that's always done well will continue to do well. So Tiff is going to go over some of that. I won't go over the strategic plan unless you have any questions on that because that's the first few slides on there. But starting on slide nine, it says the student of concern process and Tiff is just going to talk about that real quick.
So we've had some intense conversations at the high school over our kids coming up through. And I'm coming from a different lens, an elementary level, so it was really eye-opening to see how the process worked at the elementary school. And then as they move up, and elementary is very different. It's one teacher usually and it's a small group that works really hard with kids who are really struggling or kids who are identified tier two and tier three. And the goal is always to have, think of a triangle where as top as your red, you're tier three. That middle section is your tier two. At the bottom, you always kind of want that base, that green to be your tier one kids. So the goal is for that triangle to be there. And I've been in places where it's been an upside-down triangle. And with everything going on the last two years, going on three, like you said, it would surprise me if we start to see that a little bit as we look at kids, especially in the social, emotional area. So we talked a lot and had a lot of conversations, like what happens to our kiddos as they move up and they become teenagers? And they go from having one teacher and a small group meeting to having a few teachers at the middle school level and then getting to high school and all of a sudden they have seven teachers. And some of them may not even be in the main building, they're out back. And so we really talked about how do we bring that back? How do we really figure out where our kids are, the ones that are struggling? Who's been in a GEI in the past? If they're black for GEI, what happens? And it's the dynamics of how they move through the system. It really is. It's no one's fault. It's just, it's how the system is. So we came up with this student of concern process, which I think is really great. Using mostly our seminar teachers, who kids seem to have a really, you know, they're paired up with a seminar teacher that they tend to have a fairly close relationship with. And all the ones that I've been in, I feel like the teachers and the kids in those rooms really do communicate well. And if your kid's in baseball and is really close with the coach, that could be their seminar teacher. So our tier one group are, you know, all of our students in seminar get tier one. We have our, if you look at the slide, and then that document really is really specific on the steps and everything. But it's general student mentoring and SEL check-ins. We have NearPod, which is an interactive tool that you can use to, can get kids hold on Fridays or, I think, weekly, ask how they're doing. They kind of rate themselves, so social, emotional, how they feel about the... Bi-weekly, there are seminar teachers that talk to them and ask how they're doing. And, you know, hopefully, most of the kids are, there's nothing atypical about high school except for the minor adjustments and, of course, some of the difficulties that most teenagers have in high school. And they can stay in tier one. If you go to the next slide, so as these seminar teachers are talking to these students and they're reviewing the data on Friday, they might find that a student is really struggling. Maybe there's a question, how have you been feeling? And they're noticing that the student is repeatedly saying very unhappy, not feeling well, maybe a drop in grades. Attendance, that's a big one too. We're doing attendance review weekly, so maybe they haven't been in school, they're skipping classes. And at that point, a tier two process would take place. So it would go from a tier one to a tier two. And at that point, the seminar teacher would notify the Alpha Principal and the counselor, and there would be immediate contact with the parent. And we would still use those seminar teachers, except it would be more intense mentoring. So instead of every two weeks, we're looking at every other day. And checking in with the student, checking attendance, checking the grades, asking how they're doing. And of course, it's always someone that they have a really close relationship with and are comfortable talking to. The goal is that tier two, like not to get past that. I mean, if we can really, really work with those tier two kids and keep them from getting to that tier three level, I think with that close relationship that they have with their mentor, that's really what we're hoping is that we can stop most of those behaviors or struggles that the student would have and we can prevent moving on to a tier three. In the event that is not the case and a student would have to be, the student would be referred to tier three. And at that point, we go to the next slide. They would become part of our GEI or general intervention process. And they would be assigned a student mentoring case manager, which would be, could be a teacher. It could be a para, it could be an aide. And we have an application process for those case managers. And each one would have about a caseload of about ten kids on there. And we would call parents in. Once they're referred to tier three, we would have a meeting with the parent. We've already got our first aid, September aid, that's a GEI table. We would meet with parents and we would meet with teachers who have worked with the student, the Alpha Principal, Caleb, counselors. And we would essentially, kind of what you do at an elementary level, only at a high school level. I mean, we would really say, you know, let's look at attendance. How can we get the kid to school? What are some ideas we have? You're looking at social, emotional, you know, from that lens. You know, we would try to come up with different, really intense interventions for the students to help them out. And same with academics. And for example, academics, I know we're offering the tutoring. I mean, that might be something they would attend as well. And they would stay in that process, that tier three. And then in the meantime, those mentoring teachers would, we would get together and kind of go over our caseloads and figure out how to really help these kids at a more intense level. And not lose them. I mean, that's the whole goal. We don't want to lose them. And if I'm being really honest right now, I think we have enough kids at the high school to fill ten slots for all six people. And that's kind of what our counselors and the Alpha Principals were going through this week is looking at all of our kids, looking at attendance, looking at social, emotional issues, looking at grades and really identifying, could be sixty kids right now at the high school level, who could already be assigned to six people.
Do you want to add anything?
So, yeah, so the six people she's referring to, how this relates to ESR is the student mentoring team that we don't currently have. So that's what's in the ESR plans to have those six positions. And the reason for that is our counselors just don't have the time to give these kids the energy that they need. So we need to pay someone to do that on their own time. So these teachers, if we're paras or really any of our staff that want to take on one of these supplemental positions, would need with these kids after school, before school, advocate on their planning period with their teachers. But it basically is similar to an IEP case manager, except for a GEI process. So it's giving somebody that money for the extra time they're going to put in to really advocate for this student that's on the GEI. And then the study hall tutoring is also part of the ESR plan that we're now operating, starting today after school, Monday, Tuesdays and Thursdays after school with a math and English tutor and then also the study hall, a place to go study. And then one other thing that's part of our student of concern process is if a student drops out, which has been one of the biggest problems with our graduation rate, is not necessarily kids that finish through all the way and don't quite meet the requirements. Instead, it's the ones that drop out prior to their senior year. And so we're going to start having, Fred refers to it kind of like the healthcare industry when some of the guys, you have a meeting afterwards to determine why they died and what they could have done differently to try to save that patient. Similar to that, when a kid drops out, we're going to have a meeting post-dropout to pay on that kid, document and then see if we have trends on our dropout so that we can try to avoid having those dropouts in the future. So that's kind of the end part of the student of concern process if it doesn't go like we'd like it to. Any questions? You've already taken applications for those student of concern positions. We sent it out last week, letting them know it's going to be more approval in the ESR plan. It's, we have posted, it's still, those are still...
And like I said, the goal is really to get those kids in high school graduating. I mean, they deserve, I think they deserve the same kind of time that they get when they're in grade.
A lot of times at the secondary level, there's not a great NTSS structure from a support perspective. This gives those three tiers. And if they can really start increasing that tier two push with the teachers during those seminar times, man, I think, you know, those teachers will feel great as well. Because they're creating those relationships with those kids and helping struggling students.
Thank you for the time that you all have put into this. We all know that we have students that struggle. There's often that many students that we don't recognize that they struggle. So I appreciate you seeking this out. I'm not afraid of finding problems. We know that's fair and I appreciate you working to correct those as best we can. I know that you have a lot on your face right now and this took a lot of extra time. I'm excited. We all want our kids to succeed and I'm excited about looking at this at a high school level. Thank you very much. Fred, do you have any other comments for the ESR?
If they could, no, I don't. I think we're excited about being able to spend those dollars and we hopefully get that approval. We can actually start rooting more rapidly on some HHS now.
So do we need to move?
Need a motion to offer those six stipends for the NHS? That motion, if you don't mind.
I move to approve the use of ESR funds for the six stipend positions at NHS for the 2021 through 2022 years.
Second.
All those in favor? Six zero. KASV Recommended Policy Revisions.
You have those there. Take a look at those between now and the next board meeting. The only question that I have that I said I was going to do last Friday, and I did not do, was look at that bowling plan revision. So I've got to look that over a little more closely because I know we had some questions about that. But the other ones, when you look at like food service management, a lot of those deal with statutory types of things that have to be reflected that are changed. And Joni knows more about this than I do because she went through all of those things to make sure. The bowling one is the one I need to spend some time on, so if you look at that, I would appreciate it.
We have our bowling reports for you to read when you so choose. That brings us to board comments. And before we go around to board members, Fred actually has a little something to say.
And this isn't just for board members, it's for any community members too. On August the 31st, from nine to 10:30, nine AM to 10:30, is the Kansas State Department of Education, Dr. Watson and Dr. Newt Swann. They're going to be here to get the opinions from the Kansans across the state as to what we are doing well, what we should be doing differently. They have, gosh, I can't remember how many stops. They've already done thirty or so of those. And they're going to do fifty or so across the state of Kansas. They're going to be at the Meridian Center. So this is for any patrons that want to be there from nine AM to 10:30. I know Sam has spread it out on social media, glad to have a big crowd there. They won't just be from Newton, they're just going to be from other communities. Because they put this out at several different venues on a day, for example, to where they hit people where it's convenient for them. Like teachers can't make it during the day, but maybe at Dolly Center, if they're having it at night, they could go there to Dolly Center. So they're trying to do some regional ones to get people to participate in this to do that. So we put the information out to the Chamber of Commerce and others. We'd like to have a big crowd from Newton there to tell Dr. Watson what's up. And that's it?
Andy?
Man, there's so many things. Kind of tough stuff. Somebody's got to do it right. And I think some of the decisions we made tonight, I don't love, as you said, I don't even like them. But we got to get kids in school somehow and give them options. And I really appreciate that we try to do that. When we're not all together, it's still okay. We're a team. And we'll keep working forward and picking each other's brains and beating up the problem, not each other. Try to find the best solution for our kids. And thank you to the leadership for what you guys are doing every dull on day. It's overwhelming for me to get the emails. I can't imagine what it's like to be on the front line, working in the fight and doing everything you're doing for our kids. And to hear programs like this that are coming up, it just makes me excited about our future and where we're going and the energy. And, you know, personalities. You can't duplicate that. You either have it or you don't. So I'm really excited about that. Pie option, I mean, how cool is that? With all that energy and all the community members coming and being involved. And our team did some stuff, we took, wasted some pretty good dollars for some guys, right? And what I'm hearing in the community with the wind that's underneath us right now, with the energy, even despite everything that's going on, we have a lot of potential, guys. And I think we're finally picking up some speed. We're a part of a cool deal. I mean, that's a big deal for our community. And as we continue to build bridges and work together, I don't think there's anything this community cannot do. So let's keep a good attitude the best we can. A lot of us don't like what's going on, but we'll figure it out and keep moving forward together. And last but not least, I got to visit Northridge over here. And the team, the welcome, to see our team in action. I promise you, I went into one room, and I went into a lot of rooms, but this one moment sticks out to me. I went home and I couldn't stop talking about it to everybody I saw that day. One of our teammates was, I'll call her family members, was reading a story to our kiddos, kindergarten kids in circle. And I was in that story. And you don't do, again, you can't pretend, she does that probably dozens and dozens of times. And it was just amazing to see the energy and what she was giving to them and see them all engaged. And we're doing that every single day in our buildings and I appreciate that. So thank you guys for what you're doing. Sorry, long-winded, but it's not safe.
I'm good.
All right, well, I'm probably going to be a little long-winded too, so I apologize. I kind of soapbox on this a year ago and I'm going to bring it back out again. I don't want to try and prove to anybody whether they should be afraid of COVID or not be afraid of COVID. But I want to acknowledge at least that the fear is out there. COVID is real and I'm sympathetic to people's fears of it. I'm in the not-so-fraid category. I feel like there's things that I can do for myself and for my children to improve their health and give us the best chance of dealing with contracting it. I mean, we did contract it last year in November, my whole family. And, yeah, we were sick and we were able to get through that. A friend of mine that's in the more afraid category told me, you know, not everybody's as blessed as you look. Not everybody's as well-equipped to deal with catching some, COVID-19 would be specific. And I can appreciate that. I was born, we lived in low-income housing, okay? I'm a welfare kid. I know that not everybody has the opportunity for mom to just stay home. Not everybody has the opportunity to have a cabinet full of vitamins and have fresh produce on the table. And so I'm definitely sympathetic to folks from all backgrounds. Wherever you're coming from, you've got to prioritize your general health. There, if you think that the only thing that you can do is wear a mask and get vaccinated, you just need to expand your efforts. There are other things that you can do. And I'm not going to get into that, I'm not going to sound patronizing. And I realize fully that I'm speaking from a privileged position at this point in my life. But there are things within your power to improve your general health. And I'll just leave it with that. You know, there's, forty percent of Americans is vitamin D deficient, if you don't know. It's a big part of your immune system. There are hundreds of thousands of deaths every year that are preventable if folks took action to improve their general health. We can never fully eliminate the risks that are out there, but there are things that we can do. There are folks that, you know, come to us and say, you know, one death is too many. And that is true. One death will always be too many. But none of us have stopped driving, okay? And there have been great people that have been lost in car accidents. There's other things out there. We can't eliminate all risks. Again, I don't want to try and prove whether you should be afraid or not. I just want people to realize there are other things you can do to improve your health, improve your chances. And you got to make that a priority. And for the folks that maybe, you know, maybe we need to have a vitamin drive, I don't know, to try and provide something for folks that don't have that option. But I just can't, I just can't live my life totally afraid. If it catches me, it's going to catch me standing upright. And when I say that, I'll say when it catches me again, because we've already dealt with it. To end on a good note, the pool is awesome. And again, so I was one of those kids running all around town every summer, and we spent all kinds of days at the pool. That is such a big win for our community. And there are so many positive things culture-wise, like Andy talked about. I'm loving it. I feel like winning, Newton is a winning community. I'm so glad to be here. I've loved this town, I mean, my whole life. So I had a small chance to, or had a small part of my life, I lived in Iowa in a Denver community. So glad to be back. Love this town from day one. So I'm glad to see us winning, and there's a lot of good things to come. So I'll be good to that.
I just want to say thank you to the folks that came out tonight. I think it's just vital, the ability of freedom of speech. And I appreciate people taking the time, whether it's to come into the podium or to hold a sign. That is so fundamental to our system of government. So thank you for taking the time to come out and sit.
I just want to say thank you to everyone in the district. Everybody's working so hard from district office on down the line. So just thank you for that. I also want to thank the community for coming out and being involved. There's been a lot of meetings. We've sat here, or I've sat in the audience, and been one of maybe three. So it's nice to have a room full. So keep coming. But no, really, thank you, everybody. We have a lot of great things happening in this community, like the others I've mentioned. And, you know, we can just go up from here.
I guess tonight is the night of long-winded people. Andy, move. We should have talked to each other about this. Raise yourself now, Teresa.
Are you a little too jerked?
Yeah, thank you to all staff for everything they're doing, again, every day. I appreciate all of you so very much. To echo some other statements before I get to my written prepared part, thank you again to everyone who showed up tonight, regardless of your views, your concern. I appreciate you taking the time and coming here. I know for many people, it's incredibly intimidating to speak in public. So I appreciate that. It's not always easy for everyone. I hope that once we're past the spikes of COVID, that we still have such passionate involvement for our children when it comes to their mental health, for other issues that they struggle with, for other health pieces. I hope this does not go away when COVID dies down. It will die down at some point. It will never go away. But I hope your passion for children across the board is consistent. Now, for my little written part, so I hopefully will not go on a tangent. So I say thank you to a lot of people at a lot of different meetings. And tonight, I just want to say a special thank you to the five of you, five of you sitting up here tonight. The last year and a half has been absolutely indescribable. And you've maneuvered through a pandemic as parents, as individual families, but also as a leader in our community. And before COVID, this board wasn't seen as an important role. And my, my, now that has changed. You have been called every name under the sun, oftentimes on social media and in very public ways. You have been contacted daily by people who don't like you and/or don't agree with you, and they don't hold their feelings back. You have heard things like, there will be blood on your hands when our students and staff die, and you are responsible. I feel sorry for the kids who have these people as their parents. Do these people even pay attention and do any research? Could they be any more stupid? A year ago, when some community members were advocating to keep schools closed, one email said, "Schools need to refuse to allow children living in abuse to become weapons against others. Please stop arguing that if we don't open schools, children will be neglected or harmed. This is a social choice, not a school-based one." And my last example is one that most likely hits you the hardest. It did me. The comment of, "I hope the board members catch COVID. Maybe when one of their kids dies, they'll make different decisions about mandates." An incredibly disheartening piece to this is that our kids, our students, are reading these comments on social media and in very public ways, comments from parents, staff, and fellow community members. You have been attacked, discredited, and have harm wished upon your family, while you have held a leadership position, doing your best to provide equal access to quality education for all of our students. It's easy for some to be keyboard warriors and voice very strong opinions when they don't have the responsibility of making decisions or bearing the weight of those decisions. I want to thank all of you for showing up every single day, doing your best to support our students and staff. This has absolutely nothing to do with how you voted on past issues, or how you will vote in the future. And whether or not we have similar views, it has everything to do with you never shying away from difficult conversations, never hiding when tough decisions need to be made. You have put yourself out there in a way that you have during the past year and a half. You have not only had tough conversations and made those difficult decisions, often based on information that is not shared publicly due to privacy issues, but you've done so in a public setting where every single word is recorded, shared, archived, and later picked apart through one of the most difficult situations we have ever faced in our lifetime. Interestingly enough, only a handful of individuals filed to run for position on the board for this November election. I just want to say thank you so very much for staying committed to providing quality education for our students. Most importantly, thank you for selflessly giving everything you have to serve our students and community. I'm so very grateful to have this opportunity to serve people. On that note, we'll hear a call for adjournment.
I'm going to adjourn. Second?
All those in favor? Six zero, meeting adjourned.